Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, and welcome to our city council meeting on December 10th, 2024. And also, I want to acknowledge and welcome everyone to the most wonderful time of the year. It's good to see everyone in holiday spirits. And I want to thank our staff, certainly our clerk in her office, for the wonderful decorations that they were able to put in place here in our chamber. If we could acknowledge those wonderful decorations, I would appreciate it.[32.04][32.04](APPLAUSE). In addition to that, I will now acknowledge all of our citizens here today, all of our visitors and guests, and also our city staff and department heads. I want to take this time out to acknowledge my colleagues on council and our city manager, Stephen Carter, as well as our city attorney, Levonda Graham Williams, and also our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. And it's Ms. Levonda Graham Williams, sorry, ma'am. And so if we would acknowledge them this time, and I would ask that all of my colleagues on council, please note your attendance electronically.
Six members of council are present.
Would you? I did this all wrong, I'm sorry, Deborah. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We need to stand for a moment of silence, and then we need to do the pledge of allegiance.[90.61][90.61](APPLAUSE). Thank you. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[118.67][118.67](APPLAUSE). We've already called the roll, so we'll move on in our agenda. We have the minutes. We have the minutes of a called meeting on November 26, 2024, and the minutes of a regular meeting on November 26, 24. Do I have a motion and a second?
Move or adopt.
Would you please note your vote electronically?
The minister adopted six zero.
Thank you very much. And before we get into the next item on the agenda, which are presentations, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge some of our guests in the audience tonight. We have with us the senior senator of the state of Virginia, Senator L. Luis Lucas. Ma'am, if you could stand and be acknowledged.[171.23][171.23](APPLAUSE). Also, we have the members of the Portsmouth Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Ladies, if you would stand and be acknowledged.[185.01][185.01](APPLAUSE). And on this special night, because I think it is the most wonderful time of the year, I think I see a lady I haven't seen in this chamber in quite some time, and that's Ms. Glover.[201.31][201.31](APPLAUSE). Thank you all for joining us at this time, and I would go ahead. Oh, we also have our former councilwoman, Ms. Elizabeth Simmons. Ms. Simmons?[219.06][219.06](APPLAUSE). I'm trying to survey the room, I don't have my glasses on, so let me do it real quick. But I think we're okay, we're safe now? We want to get that right. Now, we do, we have come to the part of our presentation, and we would ask that the first presentation will be to our vice mayor, Lisa L. Lucas Burke. If you would come forward, please, ma'am. Ma'am, if we could, we want to acknowledge the service of our vice mayor, Lisa Lucas Burke, to the Portsmouth City Council and to the city of her birth, the city of Portsmouth. Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke has served on the Portsmouth City Council since January 2017, and has served as our vice mayor since that time. While serving on our city council, she has been the liaison to the personnel and boards and commission, planning commission, Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization. I also know that at some point, you even served in our economic development as chair. You have served as the chair of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority and a member of the Virginia First Cities. I can say without hesitation that we are grateful for the service of Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke to the city of Portsmouth, and we wish her well and all of her future endeavors. Thank you, ma'am, for your service. And on behalf of the city of Portsmouth, we are presenting to you a commemorative watch from the city council of the city of Portsmouth. Thank you, ma'am.[338.12][338.12](APPLAUSE).
Well, thank you for this moment. It is a bittersweet moment for me after having served eight years on the Portsmouth City Council. I have learned a lot about my city, I have learned a lot about our citizens, and my passion has grown and grown. And because of what I have placed into my service here to the city of Portsmouth, and by just looking at the number of votes that I did receive in my unsuccessful bid, congratulate our mayor on his successful win. But the number of votes that I did receive shows that my community still wants me involved in some kind of way. So I'm going to take the next two years to reflect on this time, to see where my service leaves me. I have a multitude of things that I could be doing, I have a lot of passion and excitement about the things, and I still love my city. So we're going to just see where it takes me in the next couple of years. So thank you for this opportunity, and thank you all for being here today.[412.53][412.53](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Our next acknowledgement is to Councilman Dr. Mark Whitaker. Sir, if you would come forward. Dr. Whitaker has served on the Portsmouth City Council from 2015 to 2018, and was re-elected in 2021. While serving on our city council, he has been the liaison to the Minority Contracting Committee, Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Social Services Advisory Commission. One thing I can say about Dr. Mark Whitaker, he is an advocate, and he continues to advocate for those in the underserved communities, and we appreciate his advocacy. On behalf of the Portsmouth City Council and the citizens of Portsmouth, we want to give you this token of commemorative service, sir, and thank you for your service to our city.[480.06][480.06](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. And to the citizens of Portsmouth, we want to thank you for the opportunity to serve, and we wish you love, peace, and joy.
Thank you, sir.[495.12][495.12](APPLAUSE). That concludes our presentations, and I will resume the regular meeting once I get back to my seat. Thank you all for your participation.[506.65][506.65](MUTTERING) Before I resume our agenda, I do want to recognize a young man that I see over there. He sat in the back, so I think he wouldn't be recognized. But it's our former councilman Doug Smith, who is now the leader of the Hampton Roads Alliance. Sir?[533.88][533.88](APPLAUSE). Thank you for being here. Madam Clerk, would you please read the council rules?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body rather than to any particular member of city council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our next agenda item is public hearing, item 24-367. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the public hearing item?
Public hearing on a proposal from Cox Communications Hampton Roads LLC to renew its cable franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system within and through the city.
Thank you, ma'am. And is the applicant here and available? Is the applicant from Cox? Please come forward, sir. If you would state your name and address, certainly you have five minutes if you have something you want to discuss with council. If not, you are not required to speak if you do not believe you have anything to say.
I have nothing to say.[656.12][656.12](LAUGHTER).
Thank you, very much, sir. You know, it would be nice, you can say your name and address, that might be helpful to us.
Sure. Why not? I'm here, I already.
Yes, absolutely. And you look very sharp, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you kindly. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Derek Williams, I'm the senior analyst at Cox Communications. And of course, the franchise agreement we proposed is something that we've done before, we're just going to continue to serve the residents in the city of Portsmouth. We're thankful for the opportunity to be able to serve, and anything we can do as far as a cable company, we'll try to continue to do that for our residents of the city.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for those comments.
You're welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. If you wish to speak on this item, I know we have a speaker, I just wanted to get that out. We, if you did not sign up to be a speaker on this particular item, you do not have to have signed up, you can come forward and speak on this item. We do have a speaker, Mr. Mark Godoldy Yatrowski. Mr. Yatrowski, sir, if you would come forward and state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and other neighbors. So I think this item will eventually be approved, but as a 16-year customer of Cox, I have used their internet services during this period of time. I'd like to take a moment to give you some reasons why I think this agreement should As a customer, I have been fairly happy with the service I've received. I've been solely an internet customer. As a retired computer operations and programming professional, you know, I kind of mainline the internet. It's still in my blood. So I would be considered a power user, even though I'm not a gamer. They're the top tier in terms of consumers of internet speed, but I'm a pretty demanding user, and when I want it, I want it. Every day of every week, despite the fact that I'm retired, I spend a couple of hours close to my computer, and then later in the evening, recreationally, I stream. So, you know, I'm there, and I get to see the good, the bad, and the ugly. So for the 16 years that I've been a Cox customer, it's been pretty good, and it has improved over time, which I appreciate. One of the elements of Cox service that I particularly appreciate is the fact that in recent times, I would say the last three years, they've done something really unusual. Many communications companies give you these teaser rates to entice you to switch from another service provider, whatever it is, mobile phone, internet, cable, you name it. Cox was the first one I've known of to actually give existing customers the best offer that they give to new customers. I mean, we're already there, right? They don't have to give us an inducement. So that goes a long way for me. It says, "You care about keeping us." The speed has been completely satisfactory in most instances. You know, nothing is perfect. People used to talk about the breakup of Ma Bell and all these baby bells, and how things were never as good after the breakup as before. But the speed has been pretty good, the reliability has consistently improved, and I can see myself as a Cox customer for the foreseeable future. Being able to link into the regional fiber network only means that the prospects are better for the future. So y'all have done a good job of drafting a contract with Cox. I went through it. You know, I didn't go through it with a fine tooth coming, it's a lot of words. But I think there are a lot of guarantees there for present and future customers, where you all have, as regulators, looked out for the citizenry. So I would ask you to approve the new agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to come and speak on this public hearing item? If you would come forward this time, state your name and address, you will have five minutes. Seeing none, this public hearing item is closed, and we will take the vote in the portion of the agenda, which is city manager's report. That concludes our public hearing items. Next on the agenda is city manager's report, item 24-368. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance that we are considering for this item?
An ordinance authorizing the city to join the Eastern Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority pursuant to Section 15.2-6400 of the Code of Virginia.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move or adopt.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted five one.
Thank you. The next item, item 24-369. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering pertaining to this item?
An ordinance granting a renewal of a non-exclusive cable franchise to Cox Communications Hampton Roads LLC to construct, operate, and maintain a cable system in the city of Portsmouth.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move or adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Item 24-370. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance authorizing extension of the city's cable franchise agreement with Verizon to April 22nd, 2025.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move or adopt.
Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
And Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting an allocation of $145,252 from the State Compensation Board, Technology Trust Fund, and operating said amount in the FY 2025 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Circuit Court Clerk's Office to fund technology maintenance and improvement.
Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move or adopt.
Second. Any additional discussion on this item? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Item 24-372. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the item we are considering, excuse me, please read the ordinance we are considering for this item?
An ordinance accepting with appreciation a donation in the amount of $100 from the Todd Water Baptist Missionary and Educational Convention Incorporated, and appropriating said funds to the FY 2025 Social Services Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to support foster children at Christmas.
Thank you, ma'am. Council members, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Move or adopt.
Second.
Any additional discussion on this item? Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
Thank you. Item 24-373. And Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to amend the proposed ordinance, specifically paragraph nine, to read as follows: that if Portsmouth Public Schools should fail to comply with (a) the requirement of Virginia Code Section 22.1-93, that it shall publish its approved annual budget in line item form, including the estimated required local match on its website, or (b) the requirements in this ordinance. And if Portsmouth Public Schools should fail to cure the noncompliance within 90 days after receipt of notice from the city manager, then no additional unexpendited local fund shall be deposited into the capital reserve fund unless and until re-appropriated to Portsmouth Public Schools for said purpose by subsequent ordinance of city council.
We have a motion, is there a second? Well, we're going to read the ordinance first.
You don't need to read the ordinance, he's adjusting the ordinance, so go ahead.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the ordinance?
Okay. An ordinance to authorize Portsmouth Public Schools to establish a capital reserve fund.
So now we have the motion to amend, and we need a second. Second. We have a motion and a second. We do have a speaker, and our speaker, registered speaker is Mr. Mark Godoldy Yatrowski. Mr. Yatrowski, if you would come forward, sir, state your name and address, you will have five minutes.
Mayor, council, and other neighbors, I have mixed emotions on this particular subject. I think that adoption of this ordinance is a step in a better direction than the one we're traveling right now. But to me, what should have happened when the Commonwealth allowed for elected school boards was to give them their own revenue source for them to appropriate without oversight from city government. When the boards were appointed, they were a subset of the city. When the board was set up as an elected body, it became semi-autonomous, in my view. There are other semi-autonomous organizations that operate within the city, the Economic Development Authority for one. And they are not subject to the same sort of limitations in terms of funding that the school system is. I would say arguably, the education of our children is the most important endeavor that any locality engages in. The future of our country depends on having a well-educated next generation, and next generation, and next generation. We are in terrible straits right now in our country because of inadequacies in public education. The future of democracy is resting on a shaky foundation. So I am not someone who believes that the city council of any locality should be the ones overseeing what the school board is doing. It should be the electorate of the city. Those board members are elected by the same folks that you are. And it is we, the people, who have the responsibility to oversee the school board and its expenditures. Consequently, they should not be held on a leash by the city council. They should have their own funds, the General Assembly should assign them their own pot of money, and let them go their own way. However, that hasn't happened, and this being a deliminal state, which is to say, the authority that any local governmental organization has is dictated by the acts of the General Assembly. Until such time as they see the light in Richmond, this is an improvement, a small improvement, but an improvement nonetheless, over the current conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We do have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, and? Yes, and this motion includes the additional language?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, yes, it does include the additional, paragraph nine.
Right, and just want to make sure that the superintendent of schools has reviewed this ordinance and is in agreement with the language?
Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
The additional language was added, and I have not sent that to him because I got that today.
No, I mean the ordinance as a whole.
Yes.
Right. The additional language really is just stating what the code already requires, and I think the whole issue of the publication of the budget was blown out of proportion. The schools have always acted intentionally to follow state code, and so I don't have any issue with the additional language because it's just adding in language that's in the code.
Thank you, sir. Once again, we have a motion and a second. Please vote electronically.
This item is adopted six zero.
That concludes our agenda items under city manager's report. We will now move to new business items, item 24-374, boards and commissions. And Madam Vice Mayor, do you have any boards or commissions to present tonight?
No, Mayor, we have no boards or commissions to announce tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Item 24-375, items submitted by council members. Do any of my colleagues have any items to submit? Well, given and seeing that none of my colleagues do, I do have one item to submit. I want to, on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council, to wish every, each and every one of the citizens in the city of Portsmouth, and everyone under the sound of our voices, a very merry, safe, and enjoyable Christmas holiday. I also would like to acknowledge the Hanukkah holiday and the Kwanzaa holiday. So we wish all of you individuals a happy holiday season, and thank you for all you Also, I will take a moment to remind everyone that we do have Also, I will take a moment to remind everyone that we do have a swearing-in ceremony for our newly-elected city council members. Council member one, Ms. Yolanda Edmonds-Thomas, will be sworn in this Friday at four o'clock PM here in the chambers, and the other council members that are remaining will be sworn in on the twentieth of December at five o'clock, once again, here in the council chambers. So I encourage you all to come and witness these events and participate. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda will be report on pending items. Mr. Carter, sir, are there any report on pending items?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there is, including your package that you should have received, a report back from the different departments. There was a couple of questions that was asked by this council. We do have information on that. But before I revert back to the mayor, I'd like to say, again, congratulations to all the new council members as they come on board, but also I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Whitaker and Vice Mayor Lucas Burke. I really appreciate the time I've had to work with you, and I look forward to continuing to work with you. So thank you for your support. Thank you for what you've done for this community, and God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Our next item on the agenda will be item twenty-four dash three seven seven. Non-agenda speakers. Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, would you please read the speaker's statement?
City councils require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light here a beat, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the city council as a body, rather than to any particular member of the city council staff or the audience, and should not and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, madam. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first speaker for the night, Mr. Tony Goodwin. Sir, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager and staff. Happy holidays. My name is Tony Goodwin, and I reside in the Parkview section of the city, and also have a business here in downtown. In the past few weeks, months, actually, we've had an uptick in, in gun violence in our downtown corridor, and there's no, that's no news to anyone in this room. But it has continued to happen, as of just recently, here on December the first, at two or three o'clock in the morning, and these incidences are impacting our quality of life in downtown. Again, I'll reiterate that I always come to this podium, not only to just moan and groan and complain, but I come here to, to be persistent in, in offering solutions to these, these problems that we, we face on a daily basis, not only as residents, but also as business owners, because they do have a drastic impact on the image that we are trying to maintain in, in at least our downtown area, but all over the city. In the meeting, a few meetings back, where I made suggestions to the effect of putting the moratorium on event spaces and stop, stop until we get the police force staffed up to the point where they can handle those types of events after a couple of incidences that happened in downtown on the same weekend. But then also look into enforcement, and I understand there's, there, there has been some attempt to, to look into the enforcement of some of these venues that have obviously created some issues of concern. But I will keep harping on the one opportunity that we have that is a tool for both the police department and also the community, either it be business or residential, that the, the drug-free and gun-free school zones are, are truly a tool, and, and it's, it's a three-part approach, and I, it's hard to tell, tell you in five minutes how it looks, so I, I gave you some, some backstory to not only the, the federal piece, but also the state code in how these issues are handled. And then in tune, and, and, and also in, in this package, I've also given you what the city agreed to from going back almost three and a half years ago, when I came up here after a, a young fourteen-year-old was gunned down within feet of the old Parkview Elementary School site on Crawford. And this was, again, something to bring to your attention, and it was acted upon, but it took basically two, two summers to get it done, and so the city engineer and staff, and I'm sure the city attorney had something to do with it as well, to validate that we did put these signs that say "safe school notice" around every public school in our city. They all went up this past summer, and when I saw that, it was a pleasant surprise to know that at least we're moving in the right direction to give people an opportunity to know. They are in a place where there's school, there's children twenty-four-seven. It, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that, that you can do this stuff at night, but it is meaning that it's within a thousand feet of a school. So with that being said, the map that I've, I've also included here shows the existing locations. I, I heard the message loud and clear that our children's museum would not be considered a school, so that's fine. But if you'll notice here on this map, you have four individual businesses or schools, and also daycares that are, that meet the criteria. Both Court Street Baptist Church, which would, of course, taking care of the incident that happened on December first, right there in our block in the three-hundred block of High Street. The daycare that is presently under construction and going to be opening soon. Children's Harbor on Green Street, which would take care of most, most of that area, and then on nine fifteen High Street, along with the Parkview Elementary School and IC Norcom. The impact is huge. It gives us a tool, again, as a community, to be able to know that we can actually get something done when it comes to, in, in, in crime prevention. And if it saves the life of a child first and foremost, but also saves the, the quality of our life here in, in Portsmouth, then so be it. But it's got to be something, it's just something to do, and slow this process, slow this mess down, because it's, it's gonna, it's gonna strangle us and, and, and kill off our businesses, and people are gonna be moving out of the city, which they already are because of the situations. So thank you very much, and please take action as soon as possible.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr...
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just want to, to Mr. Goodwin, the issue that you continue to raise about the signs and the comment about placing those signs in different locations, and that had one, I don't know if you were saying had one been at Court Street, that incident would not have occurred. We had a presentation during our public work session earlier today from the Portsmouth Health Department, showing the significant inequities and disparities that exist in this city socio-economically. Until those conditions are addressed, the quality of life that you were saying has been disturbed in downtown, those quality of life issues are being experienced citywide. Until those are addressed and serious attention is given to it, what you're recommending is only a patch until we deal with the socioeconomic conditions of the people in our community. I understand what you're saying, but if that will be a cure, then it would be seen nationwide. Until we address it socio-economically, we will continue to see the type of crime that we see, not only our city, but nationwide.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Mark Godaldick Yatrowski.
Good evening, one more time, Mr. Mayor, council, and other neighbors, and happy remaining holidays to everybody on the dais in the room and out in greater Portsmouth. So one of the bright spots for me on November fifth was the election outcome in Portsmouth in contrast to the national election result. But it was not a perfect, a perfect outcome. I had a dream of my own about this election, and former council member Simms actually is the one who planted that dream during a conversation on Portsmouth Coffee Talk many months ago. She brought up the historical fact that I was sort of vaguely aware of, but hadn't really put it into such, such a clear and concise summation. She said, you know, in the history of Portsmouth, we have only ever had five women on city council. Two of them are in this room tonight, Senator Lucas and Vice Mayor Lucas Burke. And, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and emeritus member Simms. And we have a council member-elect now who is female. But I had hoped that we would have three women on city council at the end of this election. And I had hoped that, you know, this was all formed up before the, the ballot was finalized in June. I'd hoped that Lisa Lucas Burke would have been one of those three. Because to me, she has been an example of female leadership in this city, of which we can all be proud. She talks to everybody. She's not in one camp, she's not in the other camp. She talks to Portsmouth when she speaks, and she listens to Portsmouth. I had the, the pleasure of observing her when she was chair of the Economic Development Authority. She was a steady hand as chair of that organization. She's been a steady hand as vice chair of this organization, supporting the mayor, supporting things that are good for the city of Portsmouth, rather than serving a personal agenda. And she is a role model for the women who are coming on to council. I, I think the two women who have been elected in this last election will continue to show the value of having women playing a leading role in this city. So I want to say my thanks to you personally for what you have done and for what I'm sure you will do, because I see you as continuing to play an active role in the civic sphere, whether locally, at the state, or nationally. So enjoy your rest, and then get back to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Mr. Benjamin Brown. Mr. Brown, sir, if you're here, you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Yes, my name is Benjamin Brown. I'm the vice president for Portsmouth Education Association. I'm a resident here in Portsmouth, Virginia. Um, I would like to speak about the compensation study that, that the Portsmouth School Board has provided to the city concerning teacher pay. Um, the biggest issue we're facing is teacher shortage. Part of that is because Portsmouth has failed to compensate teachers at the level they should be compensated for the years of service they, they have had in Portsmouth. Portsmouth continually lose a lot of staff to other locality based on this issue. It is important and is critical to the citizens of this city, along with the students, that we provide the resource to fully fund our schools so we're able to service our students. I heard a couple of plans on how we want to address the issue with the compensation for this, for the teachers and the staff for Portsmouth Public Schools. One of those is we want to take a step-by-step approach. That's not fair. It's not fair to the students, it's not fair to the citizens, and it's not fair to the teachers and other staff that dedicate their life to service Portsmouth. It should be all at once. All of us deserve a fair pay. All of us deserve what we should get for servicing the teach, the students and this community. It should not be less phase than the teachers first. Because if we don't pay the bus drivers and, and, and custodian and cafeteria workers, then we're gonna lose them. It is important that we put our money where our mouth is. This city cannot survive without properly educating the students, without investing in education for a Portsmouth citizen. The school system has asked for an eight-point-four-five percent increase in order to get rid of that compression that we have. I've worked for Portsmouth for over twenty-four years, have not seen a step increase. Everything has gone up besides my wages. I reside in Portsmouth. It's a very difficult task to ask us to come in continually, every day, to do a job that no one seems to want to invest in making sure that we are appropriately compensated. This increase in the budget would help bring about decompressing those steps for those teachers that have fifteen or plus years of service, and also bringing those people that service us in the cafeteria as bus drivers and custodians up to a more livable wage by increasing their pay about sixty-five percent, making them close to what other localities pay. Portsmouth loses a lot of teachers based on the fact that everywhere is about fifteen to twenty minutes away. I could go somewhere else and make more money. But I choose to service Portsmouth because I want the students to see someone that looks like them. I want them to understand that education is important. So we, we are simply asking you to just invest in the students. Invest in our community so we can be better served for the future.
Thank you, sir. But, Mr. Brown, before you sit down, sir, and I appreciate you sharing that information from your perspective, but, but as a city council, you, you need to be aware that we have provided the funding to the schools. We are the funding body that provide those funds. In fact, when the superintendent asked us this past year, this year, that he needed fifteen million dollars to do his job and take care of the needs of the Portsmouth Public Schools, this council proved that overwhelmingly. We do not handle the budget for the schools. That's under, that's under the direction of the school board. We provide the funding, so most of the questions that you were posing to us as a body this evening really need to... evening really need to be put in front of the school board and the superintendent. They are the body, they are the body, who has sole responsibility for ensuring teacher retention and all the things that you spoke about. I can share this with you without any doubt. As long as I've been on this city council and many of my colleagues, we have funded our schools appropriately to the ask of the statement of needs from our superintendent, and we have supported our teachers. So I just want you to be clear, this body supports education, we support our schools, we support our superintendent, but we do not run the day-to-day operation nor do we provide the operational management for Portsmouth Public Schools.
And, Mayor, I do understand that.
Okay.
And I have addressed this issue with the superintendent. But what I'm asking you now is that, knowing that you have a copy of the compensation study, you have the facts of the need to be able to make sure that...
Sir, I don't have a copy. What I'm sharing with you is that is not a decision that is made by city council. I do not have a copy of the compensation study. I understand what you're saying. Thank you for your comments, but that's where it is right now. Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Brown, thank you for your comments tonight. What you're speaking to is not what council has done in the past in funding, which we have funded the superintendent's request. I know as long as I've been on council, we have. You're raising the issue of the compression study, which we have liaisons that sit with the school system, so it's not like council is not aware of it. It has been presented publicly. The issue you're raising is whether council is going to fund that 14 million some dollars for that step increase that the teachers need.
Exactly.
And if it's going to be over a time period or is it going to be immediate?
Right.
So elections have consequences, and so what you are saying is nothing new. It is, this council is aware of it, and how it is handled is going to be based on those who will be sitting on council, but elections do have consequences.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. Merrill Rutledge. Mr. Rutledge, do not see him here. Our last speaker for the evening is Laura Hamilton. Ms. Hamilton, if you are in the audience, if you would come forward, state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My question is, can we get a vote on what you just mentioned, Councilman Whitaker? We know that elections have consequences.
Ma'am, excuse me, we won't be taking a vote. You are signed up as a non-agenda speaker. You are welcome to speak on an item of your choosing, but there will be no vote taken tonight on any matter.
How can we put that on the docket to bring that...
That's not something we can do tonight, ma'am.
I'm asking, how can we do that?
We can let you know after the meeting. You can speak to us and the city attorney, and we can give you some direction. But at this time, you have five minutes. So if you would speak to whatever item you would like to speak to, you have an opportunity to do that.
Okay.
If you wish to have additional information, that is something that we can provide to you, how to approach those matters in an orderly way.
Okay, so my concern, or I should say, my question is, with that being said, the question or concern is the time span. I had a conversation prior to with Councilman Hugel, the one-year, two-year, three-year span in regards to the, to the funds being released. Can that be addressed, or that have to be addressed after as well?
I'd just share with you, you are signed up as a non-agenda speaker. We are not addressing those concerns that were voted upon and moved on in our agenda. If you wish to speak to a council member or someone else after the meeting, you have that opportunity to do that. But we are not addressing those items at this time.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, let me just...
Yes, sir.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Ms. Hamilton, so that you won't feel like your issue is being ignored.
Yes, it is.
That's going to be a negotiation that's going to take place between the school superintendent and the council, so that's not going to just be a unilateral act by council. That's going to have to be something that's going to involve the school system, and then it'll be an item that council may or may not address, but it's not going to happen within anything that we do tonight. That's going to have to be something that will be discussed later with council and the school system.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our speakers for this evening. If there are not any other business for the good of the order, we wish you all happy holidays, be safe and healthy.